Good evening and welcome to the municipality Monroeville's citizens night and regular council meeting for June 9th, 2020. It is 7:07 PM. If we'd all please rise for the pledge of allegiance followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, a free and public, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its own right.
We'll start with a roll call, please.
Mayor Greasor?
Here.
Mrs. Gatos?
Here.
Mr. Poach?
Here.
Mr. Harvey?
Here.
Mr. Wolfram?
Here.
Mr. O'Cinco?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Wilson?
Here.
Mr. Ratcher?
Here.
This is council, we're going to move around our agenda here a little bit and we're going to be swearing in a new police officer Nicholas Habib in a moment. I just wanted to comment, we did have a peaceful protest here in Monroeville. This all stemming from what is going on in the United States, all surrounding the death of George Floyd in Minneapolis. And I just want to be clear that I am certainly appalled about what I saw in Minneapolis and the actions of those officers. And there's no place for that in this country and including Monroeville. With that, I want to stress how proud I am of our police department and how they always conduct themselves in a professional manner with the public, treating people with respect and dignity regardless of who they are, race, creed, color, sexual orientation, whatever, all of it. Everyone is treated fairly and we have a safe community, but we definitely want people to feel safe in our community. And so we are going to be, you know, we can't just say that, well, we're fine, we're good, everything's fine. I think we can always, always do better as individuals and even as a municipality and a department. And so speaking with the chief, we're going to continually review the policies, all the policies, look at additional training and just find ways that we can do it better. But I can't stress enough how proud I am of our police department. I support them fully. There are talks nationally about defunding the police department. I am not an advocate for that. I just want to be very clear with that. And I just look forward to moving the police department along and keeping Monroeville safe. And we have another great addition to that police force this evening in Nicholas Habib. And chief, if you could please maybe introduce our new officer.
Come on up, Nick. Thank you, mayor. Of course, thank you for those words of support for the department. I don't, I don't have to tell anybody here, law enforcement's, it's always a difficult profession. It's gotten certainly more difficult here in the past few weeks, but as always, we've seen these type of events in the past and we'll continue to move forward and do everything that we can to provide safe, effective, and very fair policing. And again, I thank you for the support, the support of all council. That goes without saying. It makes my job as a chief of police a whole heck of a lot easier when I have a supportive of the council that I know I have and I have unanimous support on that. So I really appreciate that. And I did it with you, mayor. I mean, you were involved today. You know, we protected first amendment rights for individuals that were expressing themselves, maybe pushing the limits here a little bit, but we gave them the opportunity to do that. We did that in a safe, professional manner. I can't tell you how many texts and emails that I've gotten already, greater than 20 about some different people that listened to that and certainly saw what we did. And I can't be more proud of the guys. They did an outstanding job here and they really, they really stepped up and of course we'll continue to move forward. You know, it's, it's great to be able to introduce Mr. Habib here. He's done, he's, he's, he's an individual that's 31 years of age, has a wife and three children that are behind me. But one of the unique things is he's been a military veteran since, well, military person, I guess, an active duty military person since 2007. He spent five years of active duty full-time military service and then he is now in the reserves. But in that period of time up until just recently, one of the reasons he's delayed in getting hired because he's off our previous list from over a year ago is because he's been overseas in Afghanistan, Iraq, Qatar, and Haiti.
Wow.
He spent four years serving overseas in different assignments, including being called up this last year that he wasn't available for us to hire him when we wanted to last year. So again, a great addition to the department. He has three years of experience with the Prince William County, Virginia Police Department. And here in the audience happens to be his uncle Sergeant Wagner. He's from the Percival Police Department. He's long, that's long time. So there's a history in his whole family of law enforcement, which is great. And I, you know, certainly I don't want to say anything bad about the, his mother and of course his mother-in-law, excuse me, and his children and his wife are here also. So with, we're ready to swear him in, mayor. Are you ready? Let Joe, let Joe set us up here. Set us up, Joe.
We good? If you raise your right hand, please. And you can repeat after me. I?
Aye.
State your name.
Nicholas John Habib.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And that I will enforce the laws.
And that I will enforce the laws.
Of this Commonwealth.
Of this Commonwealth.
And the ordinances of Monroeville.
And the ordinances of Monroeville.
And that I will discharge the duties.
And that I will discharge the duties.
Of my office with fidelity.
Of my office with fidelity.
I do further swear.
I do further swear.
That I will uphold, obey, and enforce the law.
That I will uphold, obey, and enforce the law.
Without consideration.
Without consideration.
To a person's race or color.
To a person's race or color.
Sex.
Sex.
Religious creed.
Religious creed.
Sexual orientation.
Sexual orientation.
Age.
Age.
National origin or ancestry.
National origin or ancestry.
Handicap or disability.
Handicap or disability.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
What else?
Thanks for your service.
Thank you, sir.
Well done. Thanks, Mike. Thanks, guys.
Good job, gentlemen.
Yes, excellent job today, guys.
Guys, very much.
Pleasure, man.
Thank you for your service as well.
Thank you, mayor.
You as well.
I'm just sharing.
You should. That's the law department, for God's sake. She's from the law department.
Remember, she's Judge Sharon.
She's important, I want to remember.
Bye, guys.
Be safe.
Bye-bye. Oh, yeah, take care.
Hey Doug, don't forget me. For God's sakes, I'm going to give him a fob.
Lock him up, Doug.
He'll forget.
Thanks for today, Doug.
Very good.
It's like an entitlement. He's supposed to go down there and have tea and crumpets, in the meantime, he's worried about getting you a fob.
He's coming back up to me.
All right. Ladies and gentlemen, if we could, we're going to move the agenda back around here.
Back on business.
Ladies and gentlemen, we are going to move back to our citizens night portion of the meeting. This is a time that we will leave open for any citizen to address counsel on any municipal matter. And we, as always, ask to stay within a five-minute time limit. We feel this is time, enough time for you to get your point across. If you feel as if you need additional time, there will be more time at the end of the meeting provided to people as well. And certainly counsel, myself, Mr. Little are available after the meeting for any other additional comments. So right now, we'll open up citizens night. If there's anyone they'd like to present to counsel. Seeing none, we're going to close that portion and we are going to move back to our, we're closing citizens night, moving back to our regular council meeting. And I will, once again, just open the floor for public comment on the agenda items. If anyone would like to speak about the agenda items, now would be your opportunity. Seeing none, moving over to our executive session announcements. The council conducted an executive session for personnel and litigation reasons on Thursday, May 21st, 2020, beginning at 5:30 PM until 6:30 PM and before tonight's citizens night, beginning at 6:30 PM until 7:00 PM. Counsel, legislative action, if any, shall be taken at the June 9th, 2020 council meeting. Counsel, you have the minutes to approve this evening. We have three dates. Forgive me, we have, we have two dates. May 12th, 2020 of citizens night and the regular council meeting of May 12th, 2020.
Motion.
Second.
Motion to approve in a second. Any comments, additions, or any other comments?
No, sir.
Okay, very good. So we have a motion, a second to approve. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Gatos?
Aye.
Mr. Poach?
Aye.
Mr. Harvey?
Aye.
Mr. Wolfram?
Aye.
Mr. O'Cinco?
Aye.
Mr. Wolfram?
Aye.
Mr. Harvey?
Aye.
Mr. Poach?
Aye.
Mrs. Gatos?
Aye.
Counsel, moving over to our list of bills and budget transfers. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mrs. Gatos?
Aye.
Mr. Poach?
Aye.
Mr. Harvey?
Aye.
Mr. Wolfram?
Aye.
Mr. O'Cinco?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
The ayes have it. And our payroll report.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve. Any comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. O'Cinco?
Aye.
Mr. Wolfram?
Aye.
Mr. O'Cinco?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Poach?
Aye.
Mrs. Gatos?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Counsel, we are moving over to our vacancies on boards, commissions, and authorities. If you look in your packet, it's under the blue section. Mrs. Gatos, do you have anything this evening?
I have nothing, thank you.
Mr. Poach?
I do not at this time, sir.
Mr. Harvey?
Nothing, sir.
Mr. Wolfram?
Nothing, mayor.
Mr. O'Cinco?
Nothing, sir.
Mr. Williams?
Nothing.
Mr. Wilson?
Nothing, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, now we're going to move over to our consent agenda for new business. We have our first item, which is 20-1-SUB, Gen 3 surveying. Mr. Little, if you would.
Yeah, applicant is requesting preliminary and final subdivision approval to consolidate tax parcel 639F380, Lot 3, and 639F382, Lot 4 into one lot. The combined lots create Lot 1C with a total acreage of .632. Property is located at the intersection of James North Street and James Street in the R21 Family Residential Zoning District. This is the corner lot of James Street and the, in the road going down to the mall.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have motion, a second to approve. Any other comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Gatos?
Aye.
Mr. Poach?
Aye.
Mr. Harvey?
Aye.
Mr. Wolfram?
Aye.
Mr. O'Cinco?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mrs. Gatos?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Counsel, we are moving over to our vacancies on boards, commissions, and authorities. If you look in your packet, it's under the blue section. Mrs. Gatos, do you have anything this evening?
I have nothing, thank you.
Mr. Poach?
I do not at this time, sir.
Mr. Harvey?
Nothing, sir.
Mr. Wolfram?
Nothing, mayor.
Mr. O'Cinco?
Nothing, sir.
Mr. Williams?
Nothing.
Mr. Wilson?
Nothing, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, now we're going to move over to our consent agenda for new business. We have our first item, which is 20-1-SUB, Gen 3 surveying. Mr. Little, if you would.
Yeah, applicant is requesting preliminary and final subdivision approval to consolidate tax parcel 639F380, Lot 3, and 639F382, Lot 4 into one lot. The combined lots create Lot 1C with a total acreage of .632. Property is located at the intersection of James North Street and James Street in the R21 Family Residential Zoning District. This is the corner lot of James Street and the, in the road going down to the mall.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have motion, a second to approve. Any other comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Gatos?
Aye.
Mr. Poach?
Aye.
Mr. Harvey?
Aye.
Mr. Wolfram?
Aye.
Mr. O'Cinco?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
The ayes have it. We have our resolutions this evening. We have three resolutions. Mr. Little.
Okay, the first one is a resolution adopting the Compassion First Pet Hospital Sewage Planning Module. You approved this development about two months ago, which will be right here on Monroeville Boulevard. This is the sewage planning module pursuant to the DEP.
Motion.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion, a second to approve. Any other comments or questions?
Is this the new AVETS location?
It is.
Yeah. The new AVETS location?
Yes.
2017.
Yes, it is.
Yes.
Any other comments or questions?
No.
Seeing none, we have a motion, a second to approve. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Gatos?
Aye.
Mr. Poach?
Aye.
Mr. Harvey?
Aye.
Mr. Wolfram?
Aye.
Mr. O'Cinco?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Okay, second resolution is a resolution temporarily suspending accessory outdoor dining regulations as set forth in ordinance number 1443 as amended and authorities and authorizing the zoning officer to issue temporary accessory outdoor dining permits pursuant to establish rules and regulations.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have motion, a second to approve. Any other comments or questions?
Just a comment. I think it's very important that council help the businesses out in this time. I think this will help them out. Sean Logan has contacted several of us, I know, with this request and I think it would be a great help during the times that we're going through.
I agree, Mr. Harvey. Any other comments or questions?
This is a temporary ordinance?
It's actually a resolution. It's temporary in nature. It will expire at the earlier of the end of the restrictions on restaurants or December 31st of this year. So it's just until really the end of the year. Or if they give the restaurants back their wings, let's say in November, then it's over.
Okay, thank you.
And if there's any issues with the timing of it, we can always revisit this as well. There's, there's no issue with that, with council to be able to do that.
Absolutely.
And the resolution, we can do that pretty quickly as well. We don't need to do it 30 days in advance like ordinances and things of that nature. So very good. We have a motion, a second to approve. Any other comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. O'Cinco?
Aye.
Mr. Wolfram?
Aye.
Mr. Harvey?
Aye.
Mr. Poach?
Aye.
Mrs. Gatos?
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Okay, and the last resolution is a resolution approving the request of Wide Waters Monroeville Company LLC for an additional extension of time to commence construction for site plan approval of 06-4-ST and a conditional use approval 06-6-C.
Motion to approve.
There's a motion?
Second.
Motion is second?
Sorry, I was reading.
Any comments or questions? I would have to, I mean, this is something that we have done in the past for this group?
Yeah, we, three years ago, council granted a three-year extension to this app. This is Haymaker Village.
Right.
This is, if you look at the front of Haymaker Village from Broadway Boulevard, it would be to your right. It's that vacant area there. So in between that and the, and the golf course. And, and yes, and it is an old approval, but they are willing, in exchange for not having to do basic things like surveying and site plan, if in fact they move forward and we have different regulations from those that were approved for stormwater or traffic, they are compelled to meet those new regulations. So the municipality is protected in that respect because the only things that probably will change are stormwater and traffic. Everything else really has been the same for a long time.
And how much time we're given in?
Three more years.
Three more years.
And they, they do a really good job with the plaza itself. It's the same development company, correct?
It is, it is.
Yes, and they do a really nice job down at the Haymaker Village Plaza. So they're, they're, they're good to our community. I think it's good that, you know, that we are good back to them.
Very good. Any other comments? We do have a motion, a second to approve. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Gatos?
Aye.
Mr. Poach?
Aye.
Mr. Harvey?
Aye.
Mr. Wolfram?
Aye.
Mr. O'Cinco?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
The ayes have it. And we'll move over to our reports of our municipal staff. Mr. Ratcher, do you have anything this evening?
Nothing more, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Little?
Yeah, I have two items. One is on the agenda and I'll report on the other one after that. As I've mentioned to council over the last two months with respect to the pandemic and with respect to our revenues, and this is every municipality and city across the country, we are going to be coming into a reduction in our revenue because of the layoff of people in Monroeville, the regional asset district tax that we get, and possibly some of the business privilege tax and mercantile tax, even though that is based on last year, which was a good year for businesses. But I've given the council specific revenues for them to look at each month so we can keep an eye on our revenue and act accordingly depending on, not if, but when the revenue starts to, to dip to some degree. I'm not going to go everything in specific. Council has the, a chart and also they have the specific revenues that are in comparison with three years. One of the good notes of this is that the wage tax, which is one tax that we're looking at very closely here because that's the people that live here in Monroeville and they, they can work anywhere, but they live here and they pay wage tax, wage tax to Monroeville. That has dipped a little bit, but it hasn't dipped nearly as much as I thought on May, this is based on May 31st. So that is the good news. But council can see is obviously we have not collected nearly as far as the business privilege tax and the mercantile tax, but that is because council extended the date to reconcile and have those taxes in, which were based on last year, by July 15th. Usually that's April 15th. And they followed the state and the federal to extending that to July 15th. So we're really not going to see the bulk of that money for another month. Now, if it's still below what it should be come, let's say September 1st, then that's an indication that maybe some of the businesses haven't paid because quite frankly, maybe they can't afford to pay it. But everything else, the building permits obviously is down because people haven't been applying for building permits over in March, April, and now they're starting to come up a little bit. But that's down, but we, we believe that'll be, that'll be coming back strong. All right, the real estate tax is down a little bit, but the real estate tax, when it comes in, it comes in in batches sometimes and you really don't know until the, the face amount, which we're in the face amount right now, until that's over with, which is at the end of this month. We'll know more, you know, next month. And I don't anticipate the, the real estate tax being down because usually that money is escrowed in most cases and it's, and it's sitting there waiting just for the mortgage companies to, to pay the municipality. So unless council has any questions for me, I'm going to be doing this every month until the end of the year.
Well, we're losing money by, what, Boston Market, Pier 1, JCPenney, all shutting down. So is there any way to go after any of that money or is it all in bankruptcy?
Well, they, they still owe it from last year.
Yeah.
They still owe it.
But Pennies hasn't paid us, is that correct?
I don't know. I wonder if any of them have.
I don't know.
Well, Pennies is in Chapter 11, so we have to go to court now to get our money.
Well.
And I think Pier 1 is going out, completely out of business.
Pier 1's going out, they're closing all those.
Correct. So, you know.
They just closed the cafeteria for it, too.
What do, yeah, the Golden Corral, which is going to be completely, what are we doing about those kinds of things?
Mr. Ratcher?
If I may.
Please.
The tax office pays attention to that and they, they do task me with making the appropriate moves, but I'll give you a good example. So Levin Furniture had closed. Now, it may open again, we don't know. But in doing some investigation, we found out that Levin doesn't own that store, they rented. So the people who, who own that are most likely going to pay the taxes. We don't have any delinquent taxes. What does happen is with delinquent taxes on real estate taxes, if somebody goes bankrupt in the year that they go bankrupt, the taxes that are due become an administrative expense of the bankruptcy, which gives them some reasonable priority. And then taxes in general have a priority in the bankruptcy. If, if it's taxes for a prior year, we're, we're able to get the priority and we file If, if it's taxes for a prior year, we're, we're able to get the priority, and we file what's called proofs of claim. And these proofs of claim, of course, and it takes forever for it to unwind, like.
Right.
You know, the JCPenney bankruptcy will be going on for.
For years.
Couple of years.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, so there are, there are methods of collecting the taxes. We have to preserve our rights through, through filing proofs of claim, and the tax office does notify me, and I do do that.
So basically, the tax office is the first stop.
Correct.
To, to, to follow this through, okay?
And a lot of times, it's anecdotally that we find out, I mean, like Pennies was a big one, but even Levin, the issue of Levin came up, and we started digging into it, and we found out that first of all, their taxes for last year had been paid, and the taxes for this year aren't due yet. So they either will be in, an administrative expense, or Levin will take over that store, and in the normal course of business, will pay those taxes before the end of the year.
Okay.
And there'll also be a difference between the real estate tax and, say, business privilege tax.
Of course.
Because that's what you mentioned about, so, like, maybe, let's say, Pier 1, I'm not trying to pick on them, but they may be renting that space, so really that doesn't impact real estate tax at all. It'd be the, it'd be the owner of the building, actually.
Well, the Golden Corral is a standing alone building. Did Golden Corral own it, or did someone else?
We may, they may own that.
Right.
But we, that, those are the kind of things the tax office would dig into.
Yeah, I don't know if they're going bankrupt, or if they're just shutting, you know, they shut that location down.
Pier 1.
Golden Corral.
Yeah, we, we always have to unpeel that onion and figure that all out. And then we have, you know, we have all kinds of things. We have real estate taxes, we have business taxes, we have the, particularly with the commercial properties, we have the MS4 fees that are sometimes substantial because of the size of the properties. So, all of the, we do investigate and take the appropriate action to protect the municipality's position, to the extent that it can be protected.
Correct.
In some of those cases, you know, the, real estate taxes you're usually going to get.
Okay.
Because somebody's going to want that property. Some of the other taxes, a little bit harder to collect, but I would say more often than not, they probably are collecting.
Okay, thank you.
And this is probably just a part of the fallout of what I think probably our community's going to see and every community's going to see in the United States with the COVID pandemic, and, but we just have to stay steady and stay after it. Mr. Little, did you have another?
Yes, in discussions with council about the opening of the Senior Citizen Facility and also the library. I'll take the Senior Citizen Center first. We have a tentative date to open up the Senior Citizen Center, which would be August the 6th. And we're going to be getting it ready. Some people may ask, well, why does, why does it take that long? Well, it takes a while to get the Senior Citizen Center ready and get it appropriate according to the guidelines, according to the Pennsylvania Department of Aging and the Senior Citizen Association of Pennsylvania. All those guidelines have to be adhered to. As far as the library is concerned, the same way they have to answer to not only us, but they have to answer to the Commonwealth Library Association, which is under the Department of Education. We have, tentatively, next Monday, they will open up and start, start to give some more services with respect to contactless or non-contact distribution of books, and there'll be more of that from the Cole Henline, Art Director of the Library. We'll be calling some staff back, not all of it, and they'll be able to offer two hours daily, Monday through Friday, and some hours in the evening. That'll be posted on their website, and they'll have books by mail. They'll be adding for man, people for the phone and email, for requested materials. Everything will be on a request. And there'll be a normal county material distributions that you get from the county, and also copier and fax, fax facilities for the patrons. Those are the added services that they'll be giving next June 15th, which is next Monday.
But Tim, so just to be clear for the public, that's more of like a curbside.
Correct.
Service. So don't, that they, you're not going to, the library will not be open for patrons to go inside the library and look for books and utilize the services. They'd have to do, they'd have to order the books, and they would have to come there and pick them up outside, whether, whether it be at the curb, or they may do something with the front room only.
Yeah, if I can add to that, too, Mayor.
Yes, please.
The gallery space is secured with that, again, following, as, as Tim mentioned, the guidelines in Department of Education, the library. So essentially, think of it as we'll call, the information beyond the desk, in the, the, the gallery space. Patrons, when that service begins, will be able to enter to that side. They won't enter into the library and pick up what's already set aside for them, then they'll turn around and leave, and try, they'll try to limit the numbers of people as it goes, you know, through their period of time, too. So there's a, there's a number of things that are restricting them from Department of Education. They've actually kind of slowing things, that process down substantially, but it's good to see them working, getting back.
Anything else, Mr. Little?
That is all.
Very good. And I will open the floor for public comment on any municipal item. If anyone, anyone would like to address council on any municipal item, now would be your final time for the evening. Seeing now, we're going to close that portion and move over to our reports of our council members. Mrs. Gatos, you want to start?
Sure. I would like to thank all of our officers for their work today, and realizing that everyone has a voice and a right to use it, and I think that they did a phenomenal job. I'm proud of them all the time, and especially under circumstances like we have today. So I just want to throw it out there. Thank you very much for all they do for us, and I think we're very fortunate to have the gentlemen, women that we have aboard. And, no, I haven't got a haircut yet, but I am going to Friday, in case anyone was wondering. And I'm glad everybody here has been able to stay safe and healthy. We've all been fortunate that this not, has not hit any of our homes, and I hope that for everyone that's out there. And just keep your guard up, and, because this thing's not gone yet, so, but we're trying to move forward, and that's, that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Poach.
Thank you, Mayor. I, too, want to echo the sentiments that Linda brought up, and we talked about earlier, and we said to the, Mayor mentioned the police department today, too, the opportunity to, to see some of the operational plans that were in place, and, and, and they were executed pretty well. In addition to not just the Monroeville Police Department, who did terrific, the, the other resources that were available today, the state police were here, and, and very instrumental with their, and the county police were, were here as well. Pitt Karen was here, was here as well, to help, and a number of people on, on call to be able to respond to, you know, the people exercising their right to protest something as well, too. So it was well done from that. The hospitals were engaged, both Forbes and UPMC, and were monitoring the situation and prepared for that, so they were engaged, as well as a number of people in the community, too. So that was terrific, you know, to see, to see that done, and, and well done to those guys in, in the field, really, on a really bad day, as well, to do it. To, again, Brad, you reminded, remind me to say that, is, is, I'm, boy, am I glad that we can all see each other. Yeah, we're all doing well, from the, what's his aspect? I, I'm good, I'm, I'm negative, it's. But that's true. I mean, we.
Good shot.
Worked really hard, we worked really hard, I think, as, as a group collectively, to do some of the things that we did online, to try to keep Monroeville moving forward, and, and it's a credit, I know, and a challenge. Mr. Osinko keeps looking for me, to me, like, you know, what, a computer, what? I need to do something with it, but you got through it, Greg. Well done to do that. And on a more solemn note, just for a moment in passing, of a friend, someone in the fire department, former chief at Number 6, Warren Douglas, just recently passed away. His wife, one of our members in Monroeville 4 as well, is joint, is belongs, and, and Warren was a long-serving, you know, member of the fire department for a long, long time, and he, he passed away recently, and hoping good, good travels for him as well in the future. I think that's it for now, sir. Thank you.
Great, very good. Thank you, Mr. Poach. Mr. Harvey.
Yes, the first thing is probably a question to Mr. Little. The, the person that we hire to cut vacant property grass, do they do commercial properties, too?
I guess what I'm getting at is.
They do, but I'm not sure if it's the same outfit, but we definitely hire somebody.
The Golden Corral, needless to say, is getting overgrown, and being that it's right on Business 22, it's starting to look pretty crappy. Is there any way to get them to?
Stay down Duff Road, too.
Who was that, Tom?
Golden Corral, down Duff Road.
Oh, no, no, I thought you mentioned another iPhone.
I did not talk to them yet.
All right, yeah, we'll look into that.
Yeah. Mr. Ratcher, if you could, maybe.
I, I just was asking him if code enforcement had been involved yet, only because before we can just go in and cut it, we have to give them notice.
Right. My guess is the code enforcement has already been on top of this. They've been pretty aggressive, as they always are, and it's something we all stand behind because, you know, you, that really brings down the value of neighborhoods and our business districts. So code enforcement has been very aggressive with this, and some residents do contact me, not fully in favor of that, because they might get, you know, letters, staying their grass a little too long, but, you know, I definitely take the stance that it's really important to keep up, keep this up in our community, and if they cut the grass, they can disregard the notice. It's very simple. But, so, yeah, to, to your point, Mr. Ratcher, I'm sure they did, but especially with it being corporate, there's probably a little bit of a delay, but there is like a, is it 14 days, I believe, or 10 days?
It's 10 or 14, it's.
Seven, it's seven business days.
Seven.
So you'll probably see that grass cut soon, Mr. Harvey.
Okay, the second thing is, is that, kind of chimes in with the swearing in today. I am sure, and that all of you are, is unbelievably insulted. I don't even know what to say as far as the events that happened in Minneapolis, but I just don't want what you hear on the news and politicians getting involved in the running and management of a police department, and it's the worst thing that could happen. We ultimately, as I just read in the new, our news thing, are, are the people that answer for that, but we have professionals downstairs, and we should let them continue to, to do so. I just want to reiterate that. The worst thing that could happen is getting unqualified, uneducated, as far as police work goes, people involved in, in managing on what they can and can't do. So, I trust Chief Cole, and I trust the supervisors that he has, so, just wanted to make that comment. And I just wanted to say to any business out there, please feel free to call me with any idea that you have that may assist or help most of our businesses around town, such as the outdoor dining. Maybe there's another idea out there, just wanted you to invite, I invite you to call me if you had something that you wanted to propose to council.
Very good. Good idea, Mr. Harvey.
That's all.
Mr. Wolfram.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I'd like to thank our police force for doing an excellent job out there. I know it's tough. People are saying things about police officers, and like Mr. Mayor said earlier, that we have a great, great police force in our midst and everything like that. We'd like to welcome our newest member to the group, Mr. Habib. Also, in regards to what you just said, Ron, as is, getting a lot of emails for council and stuff like that, throwing bricks and stones at us, let's say, we have to let people do what they're allowed to do. If we didn't, I'm sure it would get worse out there. They were very, they were very nice, let's say, about their protest today, and again, I support their effort in, in getting rid of the bad officers that are out there. There are some, I'm sure of that, because you can't hire everybody, and everybody has a, a great temper and everything like that. Again, I support them in their effort, and basically, like I says, as far as the emails that we get, I wish they'd stop. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Well, you signed up for it, Steve, so.
I know I did.
Three more years of it.
I know.
Very good, thank you.
Well, you know, if I may interject real quick, if you, the, the ironic thing is, every profession out there has those bad people in it, and there's 1.2, 1.6 million police officers across the country, and one caught on film.
Yep.
Shot it for everybody. Doctors can, can, can misappropriate drugs, and the story's an hour long, and that's the end of it. There can be bad lawyers' representation. I saw the other day.
What?
Then, he said, is that possible? I saw the other day a professional sports figure who was caught by the FBI soliciting minors for sex. One hour of news, and it's over. And so, not that I don't take that what happened seriously, it's all I'm saying is, don't pin that reputation on the rest.
Very good. Mr. Osinko.
Yeah, I, I think it's been said how wonderful our police department, and they did a really nice job, and they were very respectful, but I also want to thank the protesters. They held the, like it was said, they maybe pushed the envelope a little bit, as the chief said, but overall, they did a nice job, and certainly, everybody on this council, and I'm sure in the listening audience, certainly supports their First Amendment rights, as certainly we all do. A little bit on what Ron said, I am glad to hear, Mayor, you feel that way. I'm sure every ever council member here feels that we will never defund our police without its anarchy. I mean, I'm just shocked at Minnesota, and I'll just leave it at generic, that, that they actually voted to defund their police. Very sad. For Warren Douglas, I didn't know him, condolences to the family, but I did hear that very good things about him, so condolences to that family, and to Officer Habib, welcome. You joined a great force, and with that, I concede, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Williams.
It can be tough times in today's world. With God's help, we're going to get through it. I want to thank Mr. Houston and his group for the way they acted in the protest today. Thank you very much. Another thing on my mind is the right to know the laws, and it's a legal law. Anybody's, can get information through it. In May 2020, the estimate it cost at the municipality of Monroeville was $720. Some of the requests were employees, names, positions, and salaries, a letter of interest, and resumes for all individuals applying for boards and commissions. For 2018, 2019, they want information on hose pumps, ladders, test results. They want the names of all landlords in the municipality of Monroeville, and in some of these requests, I'm sure, are people in business looking for ways to put out their name and maybe jump up some business, but I guess that's their right. As far as our meetings, I think especially televised meetings, we ought to work on getting them to be on time. I had a question today about a guy put a refrigerator out, and the garbage guys did not pick it up, and I told him that the freon has to be removed, they have to have an orange sticker proving it, and then the refuse people will pick it up. Ross Supplies is one of the jobbers that can do that. If you call them, I don't have her phone number, but call them and ask them what you need to do to have that done. My condolences go out to the Douglas family, and full confidence in our police department until they prove otherwise. I'm never for defunding them. Chief Cole does a great job. Our police did a great job today. None of, I wasn't happy about not being able to turn on the 48. And we'll get on with life.
Yeah.
And that is my report.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Mr. Wilson.
Short and sweet. Thank you to our police force for doing a terrific job. Thank you for the protesters for keeping peace, and, you know, let's just keep moving forward. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. And yes, I will, I'm going to echo most of the comments that were already made, but condolences to the Douglas family, and, and to the, the chief for his service to our community over the years. Mr. Poach brought up about mutual aid that we had here this afternoon, so certainly our police department acted in an amazing fashion, but we did have a lot of outside agencies that assisted us and were also ready to assist us further if things went south, but I will, as others have, give the, the people who showed up to protest credit. Right from the beginning, I met with them, and, and they, they assured that we were going to stay peaceful. Yes, our concern was the, the safety of everybody involved. You know, we didn't want anybody getting any kind of altercations with people in cars, and that is a very easy thing to do when you start snarling up traffic, and there were some moments, but it was handled appropriately. And, you know, with many of our own residents that were marching, and a lot of, a lot of visitors to our community as well, but once again, our police department, you know, showed them the kind of police force that we have out here, and, and actually, you know, speaking with a lot of the protesters, they were, they felt very comfortable, and they really appreciated the way that our police department and the surrounding police force that came out, how they conducted themselves, and kept everybody safe, and kept a safe distance, and it went, it went very well considering, considering the heat. As we mentioned about the businesses, yes, we are green here in Allegheny County. There are still restrictions, but please, I encourage people to get out there and go to our restaurants, continue to get takeout if you can, if you can eat outside, and hopefully this resolution tonight will help that. Try to spend some money with these businesses. They've had a really hard time, and, you know, let's get back, let's get back to our, our new normal and our, our old way of life, and let's all work together and make that happen. And lastly, once again, congratulations to Officer Habib, and welcome him to our community. And with that, I will.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to say one thing I forgot. I apologize.
I didn't get a motion to adjourn yet, so go ahead.
Stop it. No, you know what, I got, I, I, I have to say this. I want to congratulate our mayor for doing a real nice job. He actually walked quite a distance in this extreme heat with our protesters, and because of what Nick did, I think, Mayor, you did a, you, you helped keep that in line, as well as our officers, but I need to publicly say, great job. Thank you for what you did today.
I appreciate that, Mr. Osinko. And, and he was, and Mr. Osinko was, was involved with it as well. He was here at the command post as well. There's a lot of, a lot of feet on the ground for this one, because, you know, unfortunately, you know, these things can go south, but, but fortunately, it, it did not, and things worked out well, but thank you for saying that, and it was, I feel it's my duty to, to support our residents, support our businesses, and hopefully, you know, and keep the peace to the best of my ability, and to work with council, and make this a great community, and continue to keep it a great community. So with that, I will seek a motion to.
So move.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed, thank you, and good night.